We call the Colrain Township Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, May the 18th, 2021 to order. And if we all could stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Kayler, if we could have a roll call, please.
Mr. Ferring.
Here.
Ms. McBolland.
Here.
Ms. Smith. Mr. Gering. Mr. Grody.
Here. In the absence of Mrs. Smith and Mr. Gering, we'd like to seat our two alternates, please, if you would. And the minutes will reflect that.
Mr. Westfall's the dark gray and Mr. Wilson's.
Okay, before we move on with our agenda, first of all, a word of welcome to all who are here present in the meeting room this evening and to those who are at home, who are watching on closed-circuit TV. We ask everyone present this evening to please silence their devices, your phones or whatever that you have. And commissioners, if you'll make sure that your microphones are turned on, please. At this time, our first order of business. Well, maybe let me back up. Mr. Kayler, would you like to introduce the gentleman who is sitting to your right?
Yes. This is Mr. Jared Alec, and he is coming to us from Dearborn County Planning Commission. He just started yesterday, but he will take my place and he will probably be staffed for you in September at zoning commission.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Alec.
Thank you, sir, and I look forward to the initiation tonight.
Okay. Trial by fire.
There we go.
Would you like to say a few words about yourself, perhaps to introduce yourself, and maybe just a tidbit of your background?
Absolutely. I'd love to, if you wouldn't mind. As Mr. Kohler said, my name's Jared Alec, originally born on the west side of Cincinnati, product of Miami University, then the United States Army. Most recently, as the assistant community planner at Dearborn County. And then kind of people here were gracious enough to offer me employment. I look forward to serving you well.
Okay. So you're coming from Hoosierville and coming to Buckeyeville.
It's a whole different world. It's a whole different world.
There you go. Well, welcome to the community and to your job, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, and I thank all of you. I appreciate it.
Okay, our first order of business this evening is the approval of minutes for June the 15th, 2021. If commissioners would please direct our attention to them, and are there any necessary changes or corrections that need to be made? Hearing none, could we please have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for Tuesday, June 15th, 2021.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second.
Mr. Kayler, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Ferring.
Yes.
Ms. McBolland.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Westfall.
I'm staying.
And Mr. Grody.
Yes. The minutes stand as approved. The next item of business is public address, and this is the portion of the meeting where, if there is anyone present this evening who would like to speak about something or address something to the commission which is not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to do so. So is there anyone present who wishes to do so? Okay, hearing none, then we will move on. My next item of business is a final development plan, case ZA 2005-09-5759-5761, Springdale Road. It's an office building plans. And Mr. Kayler, the staff have a report.
Yes, we do. This comes as an amendment to a previously approved final development plan for this particular address. The original development plan was approved in 2005, and that was just prior to the adoption of our current zoning ordinance. So it was approved under an older version of Colrain Township Planning and Zoning. The original plan called for a strip retail center that had offices below plus an additional detached office building, which was defined as a future office building. And that's the focus of what tonight is, is giving some definition to that future office building. This property is located on Springdale Road, the south side of the road near Ronald Reagan Highway. Directly across the street from it is Soccer City and Club Trio. To the north is the Peach Grove Condos and Peach Grove Apartments, and then to the south is Ronald Reagan Highway. The strip center itself contains a combination of restaurant and office and retail uses. The property's zoned PDB, Planned Development Business, that would designate that there is a development plan associated with that property. Soccer City across the street, zoned B2, which is general business. Also adjacent, the condos is zoned B2, general business. And there's a note, and this really, I digress from the actual purpose of this, but we have several instances where the old zoning classifications didn't really translate well into the new classifications. Under the old zoning, you could do mixed-use developments, and like in a commercial zone, you can do both apartments and do commercial. You can't do that under current zoning. So this is on a list of properties that we will probably be bringing back to you at some point in the future to correct the zoning categories on that. And then also, a part of those condos is zoned R4, which is single-family, so those would be considered non-conforming uses as well. Development plan criteria, and these are in your staff reports, so I'm not going to go through these in detail, but we do have specific criteria for evaluation of plans. And there's several items in those. And since this is already an approved preliminary development plan, we're basically just looking for conformance with that preliminary plan. And then does the new development conform with the current zoning regulations? This particular plan consists of an application and a checklist. Also, there are drawings, and they're labeled Z1, Z2, and Z3. So once approved, those become the official record for this new plan. The findings that's required, that the final development plan for Springdale Road Office substantially complies with the intent and conditions of Colrain Township Resolution 39-05. That's the original approval resolution for this development as revised, and the requirements of Section 4.5.3b, which is the criteria for approval of a final development plan. This is an aerial shot of the strip shopping center. It is one floor. If you're driving down Springdale Road or even go to like Barnesburg Tavern, Tags, and some other businesses, and you probably don't even realize that there's a whole level of offices underground in the rear. That yellow rectangle is the location for the proposed office building, the focus of tonight. This is a rear view from the air, rear view of the building from the ground. There's a driveway that comes down from Springdale Road for parking in the back. This is the actual site where the proposed building would be. It would be, you would enter into like the second floor from where that parking lot is, and then there's a pedestrian access to the rear to access the lower level of the building. So it's built into the hillside, similar to what the stripper retail center is. This is the parking directly in front of the proposed office building and the apartment building directly to the east. This is the original final development plan that was approved back in the 1990s, I'm sorry, 2005. And as you can see, it called for a single-story office, 2,000 square feet as Phase 2. The proposed office building is slightly larger, and it's slightly larger footprint plus its two levels. So the total square footage on this is now 4,740 square feet. So it's more than double the square feet of a single-floor office building. Also, I noted on this, and it's something that we don't do with current commercial properties, but it shows a buffer strip on the adjacent property. Current zoning standards require that if commercial developments are required to have buffering, that it has to be on the commercial property and not the adjacent residential. And this might be because that previous, where it says E retail, that was the old zoning classification. That might have been a allowance under the old zoning. Unfortunately, I didn't do the research on that to find out for sure. Also, the parking lot had a large open area behind it in the original plan. There were three amendments to the original final development plan for this. One added 25 additional parking spaces in that triangle, and it also kind of condensed the stormwater detention basin, which is at the very tip end of that. There was also an amendment to eliminate some of the original landscape islands within the parking lot in order to gain some additional parking spaces. There was a further amendment just a few years ago to add outdoor dining to the Barnesburg Tavern. So those all came back to zoning commission as amendments to this particular development plan. Okay, get to my next slide. Now I can do it. Oh, skipped. This is, back, sorry. This is the amendment to the development plan that added the parking. It's the spaces, each time I do this, I have to get the laser pointer. This area in the back is what was added as parking. And again, on this, it also identified that future office building. This is the floor plan for the proposed office building. Again, it's two-level, fairly simple in design. The building itself meets all of the architectural requirements that we have in this current zoning code, so that checks out okay. One of the issues that comes up with new commercial development, we require that you have public sidewalks in the right-of-way. And I talked this over with our township administrator, and we really thought, well, it would be a bit unreasonable to require sidewalks for the entire frontage since the existing building was built prior to that requirement. We also discussed, do we really need sidewalks in this section of Springdale Road since there are no other connecting sidewalks around? Long-term, it would be very desirable probably to have sidewalks. There's people probably in these apartments, there's a lot of high-density residential that may want to be able to walk to this strip shopping center for convenience purposes and not have to walk in traffic or on the berm of Springdale Road. But we think that that's probably not going to happen in the near future. We do have a provision in our zoning regulations where a developer can pay into a parking fund in lieu of actually building the sidewalk, and that is subject to approval by our township trustees. In that, we're a little bit ambivalent as to, I mean, we see a need for a sidewalk here, but also realize it's not connecting with anything. Our recommendation is going to be to leave it up to the applicant to decide whether or not they want to either install the sidewalk or pay into the parking fund, or the sidewalk fund, sorry. Our recommendation is for approval of this final development plan as submitted, subject to the following conditions and variances. Number one, that the development plan conform with the approval conditions set by the, in 2005, by the original Resolution 39-05. Number two, and this is a newer regulation, that landscaping be installed in accordance with the original final development plan, that side yard buffer be installed with a six-foot privacy fence, eight evergreen trees, and 15 shrubs on the north and west side of the building in accordance with Section 14.2.5. And I want to go back to that. Number four, that a public sidewalk be constructed on Springdale Road from the entrance drive to the east property line in accordance with Section 13.4.2b. The construction may be waived, subject to approval by the Colrain Board of Trustees, and payment into the sidewalk fund. And that no additional freestanding sign be approved, and that wall signage conform with standards of 15.8.3G, meaning you can have a side, a wall sign attached to the front of the building, the ratio is one square foot for every foot of width of the building. I probably need to skip back to some of these photographs. And I had noted here on the plan that there was a call for having buffering on the adjacent property, and I talked to the applicant about this, and there is some existing vegetation, actually fairly substantial vegetation, on the backside of the building. It doesn't have a privacy fence, but it's pretty dense buffer. And then also, going towards the east side of the building, there is some buffering between the actual apartment building and where this new building would go. The only area that's open is where the parking lot is. So on further consideration, and I know this went out in the packet as a recommendation, but I can see a case where we would be able to say that what is there, as long as they maintain and keep the vegetation that's there, that that suffice to meet the conditions of the zoning requirement. So I would propose that we actually change that item three to read that the existing vegetation be preserved. Now, if that existing vegetation, for some reason during construction of the building, gets removed, we would recommend that they plant the evergreen trees and do the privacy There's also a variance built in with this. We looked at the calculation that the applicant provided on the development plan and noted that they were basically calling for parking for retail use on the entire first floor of the strip center, or the main floor of the strip center. We calculate that at four parking spaces per thousand square feet of floor area. If it's a restaurant, and about, what was it, three-fifths of the floor area ended up being restaurant between the Barnesburg Tavern and Tags Cafe, that we require 15 parking spaces, so almost four times as much parking per thousand square feet of floor area. We've noted in the past, when we've had development plans that include restaurants, that we tend to be a little heavy, but I will say, we tend to be a little heavy on our parking requirements when you have, say, fast-food restaurants where you have drive-through and you don't have as much sit-down. Both of these are sit-down restaurants where, I mean, you can do carry-out, but the parking demand tends to be a little stiffer. So I would say, we have a little bit of a concern about parking. This is actually the Cages aerial photograph. I don't know what time of day this might have been taken, but as you can see, the parking in front of where the, oh, I lost my laser pointer. The parking in front of where that office building would be is actually fully occupied in this aerial photograph, as is a lot of this front parking. I will say that, having gone there a few times, that I'm guessing most people don't realize that there's considerable additional parking in the rear, and they may see some advantage in putting some kind of a directional sign up saying that there's additional parking in the rear of the building. But we have a concern that the construction of this new office building is going to add some additional parking demand for this lot, and I think that can be absorbed in the rear parking lot with adequate signage. So we are recommending, though, that a variance be granted to allow eight fewer parking spaces than what would be required by code. So that with the conditions and the variance is our recommendation. So I welcome questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kayler. Commissioners, any questions, comments to Mr. Kayler?
Do you know what type of business is going into the building?
They have simply labeled it as office.
I guess one of my concerns would be the parking, for sure. They didn't take islands out and all that bit to add more parking in the previous, if there wasn't already a parking issue. And now you're throwing not 2,000, but 4,700 square feet of office in.
Mr. Kayler, on item number three that you suggested we change to existing vegetation be preserved.
Yes.
Where do we stand in the future if, let's say, this is approved, it gets built, we're a year or two down the pike, and somebody decides to just go ahead and cut that out, that it doesn't look very good, or it starts to die, or what have you?
I mean, quite honestly, I would say, keep three intact.
Okay.
And say, or preserve the existing vegetation. So if the existing vegetation is not preserved, then three kicks in for the privacy fence and the evergreen trees. I think that'd probably be the cleanest. And also understand, once these are approved, these conditions become a covenant to that site plan. So if trees die in the future, technically, that becomes a zoning violation.
Also, Mr. Kayler, is it, it's my understanding that this proposed building does not require an elevator for ADA purposes?
The architect can probably explain that. However, the elevator would not be considered a zoning requirement. That would be a building code requirement.
Okay, okay. Commissioners, any other comments, questions for Mr. Kayler?
No, I just want to say that I agree with Mr. Ferring, that the reduction of eight parking spaces will be a huge challenge for this area. I mean, the existing building has some very successful businesses. I don't expect any of that parking to be reduced, and so the addition of this is going to cause some overflow. And as you mentioned, a sign pointing down to the lower parking lot is great. Yeah, eight spots could be pretty valuable.
They're not reducing existing parking. The eight parking spaces is a variance from the requirement, just so you understand that.
Right, sorry, I misspoke.
So how many new spaces are going in as a result?
None.
That's what I thought?
None, but all the existing spaces are preserved.
Okay.
As part of this.
But if it were true to form, then they would require eight more spaces.
Correct. And that's because of the restaurant use. And in theory, if one of the restaurants went out and converted to retail, all of a sudden, that requirement would go away because of the difference between the two. That's kind of tricky when we're doing shopping centers in general, that different uses going in there create different parking demand, and a lot of times, there's no flexibility with parking lots. So we just manage as best we can.
Is the applicant present this evening? Okay, if you'd like to come forward, sir. And if you would, please state your name and your address. And for the record, would you please spell your last name?
Sure. My name is Osam Martin, M-A-R-D-I-N, with Professional Design.
Okay, and your address, please?
3627 West Fork Road.
Okay. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. So regards to a couple of things, if I may. Item number three with the side yard buffer, installing the six-foot privacy fence, until that sidewalk is installed, right now, the tenants from the apartments and the condos actually do cross over through that buffer yard area to come to the shopping center. So is it possible that we could remove the requirement for the privacy fence, because that would restrict access to the site? I completely understand, you know, if something happens to the vegetation, we have to restore the buffer, but is it possible we could remove the requirement for the fence? And then the...
We're taking notes, sir. If you just want to continue on with your presentation, then we'll address this.
Sure. And then the next comment was about the parking. And so, to Marty's point about the restaurant uses that are in the center, the Tags and the Barnesburg Tavern, Tags has morning and lunch hours, and Barnesburg, while open for lunch on some of the days, is a primarily dinner spot, and most of the retail and office tenants are closed by the time they really kick up. So there's a little bit of overlap, but not really. The way it's structured right now actually works well. I mean, I've talked to my client extensively about it to make sure that he's not putting himself or his center in a precarious position, because the last thing he wants is his tenants to complain that there's nowhere for them to park. I agree on having signage saying additional parking in the rear, and that's something that I'm sure he'd be amenable to if the parking is the primary concern. As far as the elevator requirement, my understanding is, his preference is to make the building for two separate tenants. The stairs that were shown on the floor plan was an option in case he does have a tenant who wants to take both floors. Access to the top floor is off of that existing parking lot. Access to the bottom floor would be off of a sidewalk coming from the existing rear parking lot, so that would help spread some of the use, some of the concern about overloading that front parking lot. The access is off the rear, so they would be parking in the rear anyway. Is there any questions or anything you would like me to address in particular?
I think someone asked before, sir, do you have a tenant that's ready to move in there?
So we have an office tenant for the top floor, and as it stands right now, more than likely, Jazzercise is going to be relocated to the basement floor. And that has to do with sound isolation. They've had complaints from other tenants currently in the center next to Jazzercise that the noise is just coming through, and it's too loud, so they want to give them their own space and put it in a new office building where they can build in the sound attenuation to keep it contained.
And Jazzercise is currently located where?
Is it in the basement? In the lower level of the existing strip center.
Okay. Gee, I thought the restaurant would create more noise than Jazzercise would.
Something about loud music, it just goes through walls.
Can you give us the nature, not necessarily the name, but the nature of the tenant for the first floor?
I'll defer that to my client. He can decide if he wants to divulge the name, but it is an office use.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions or comments for Mr. Martin?
I just have one. You said until the sidewalk is put in. You intend to put the sidewalk in, or?
Well, I spoke with my client who has a construction company, and he's weighing the options of, do we put the money into the fund, or does he have his guys install the sidewalk itself? And so if he just decides to install the sidewalk, it's a moot point, but if he puts But if he puts the money into the fund, which I think he's leaning towards now since the cost of materials are so high right now, is that, you know, the last thing he'd want to do is cut off that waiting for the rest of the neighborhood to get their sidewalk installed. Does that make sense?
Not to me, but maybe to you. We get $75 a foot for a sidewalk.
Yeah.
Unless you're pouring a 20-foot wide sidewalk, but, okay. Just curious.
I have a quick question.
He can speak to the cost much better than I can. Yes, sir.
Is it your intent to try to keep that existing vegetation buffer in place?
Oh, absolutely. I, I do want to make that very clear. So the existing relationship that he has with the condos and apartment building is that he is required, that our client, Russ, is required to maintain the existing landscaping. So it is his intention to continue to honor that agreement between him and the neighbors.
So if that is the intent, then that temporarily delays the installation of the fence.
Well, yeah, my, my client's point was is that if there's a six-foot fence, how am I supposed to maintain their, their landscaping?
Okay, well, I didn't hear about your comments, meaning maintaining the landscaping versus the fence, of people in the apartments trying to walk through that area to get to the strip mall. I thought that was the concern of the fence.
That's the, the, the primary concern from protecting his businesses. But the practical concern for my client, having to maintain the landscaping, he's concerned. If there's a fence, I have to go around the fence to maintain the landscaping. It, it seems kind of odd to divide the landscaping he has to maintain in half.
Mr. Kaler, if the fence had to go in, could it be designed in such a way that it's not quite as long as it needs to be so that people could still continue to walk across that property?
Yes, the 150 feet that we cited in that, probably should have drawn that on here, is really just, as you can see, from about this point to the back corner and across here. It doesn't actually go up to the parking, so they could still cut through and access it to parking. So it's really just this little section of property and this little section. However, you know, if I, my suggestion is to add the number three or that the existing vegetation be preserved. So as long as that remains preserved, there would be no requirement for evergreens, would be no requirement for a fence. So the only trigger would be is if that existing vegetation got cleared out for some reason.
Okay. Okay, commissioners, again, any further questions or comments for Mr. Martin? Sir, you referred to your client. Is your client present this evening? And would the client like to come up and address the commission?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Again, sir, if you would state your name and your address and spell your last name, please. And while you are speaking, do you feel comfortable lowering your mask so we can understand you?
Yep. It's Russell Bradley, B-R-A-D-L-E-Y. And you want my home address or the business?
I'm sorry?
Did you say my address you needed?
Please.
Fifty-seven sixty-one Springdale Road. So as far as the business going in, on the top floor for now, will be my business, The Montgomery Home Care. We're also located in the basement area. Basically have four office people, you know, for the whole office. So it's a lot of record keeping. We do have, I think right now, we got about 45 employees, but they come and go, they drop off paperwork. There's no day-to-day operations inside the office complex. So moving us up there. We basically need a little bit more room, since I own the building and the business, that's where we're going to go. We may move to the basement area. If Jazzercise does not want to move to the upstairs unit. And then I'm trying to talk State Farm into moving over to that. So kind of trying to shuffle some things around. There's another business in the basement, Homegrown Zone. And he wants the whole bottom floor, basically. Because they're doing really well, I'm assuming, and, you know, so I don't see more people coming to, you know, but he has more space to spread out.
If you could clarify, sir, the whole bottom floor of what?
Of the, of the, the existing building. So right now, he is, I think he is in three of the units. And then he uses my other one for storage. So he would like another four units down there. Barnesburg, I think, has two and a half or one and a half over in the corner that they use for their food. So, and then, kind of addressing the, the fence. I mean, to me, putting a fence up, you know, I've been in construction a long time, been on many commercial properties, on how bad they look in the future. You know, I mean, you put up a six-foot-high fence, whether it be vinyl or wood, and in 10 years, they just, to me, they look terrible. I would, I mean, I wouldn't care to put pine trees up if you, if that would be the buffer or, or whatever. I think that looks way nicer, you know, for, for everybody. Ever, somebody's always got to see a bad side of the fence, right? So I don't know if that changes your mind about the fence or, or what. And then as far as the sidewalk, we probably will pour the 80 feet of sidewalk just to get it out of the way. You know, less grass to cut, the better. You know, so I don't see anybody really using it, but we'll put it in. So do you have any other questions for?
Okay, commissioners, any questions or comments for Mr. Bradley? Okay, before you take your seat, again, Mr. Kaler, let's review that item number three again. That would give you the, give the township the necessary latitude to either fence or greenery of some sort, is that correct?
Yeah. Number three would read the same as it is here. The side yard buffer be installed with the six-foot privacy fence and eight evergreen trees and 15 shrubs on the north and west sides of the new building in accordance with section 14.5.2, or that the existing vegetative buffer be preserved.
And in the event that that dies out, the existing, does this still give you enough room to work? As Mr. Bradley's saying, to put new evergreens or greenery in there as opposed to a fence?
That would still require the fence.
Okay.
And I mean, you can delete the fence. That, that is a, it's a code requirement, but this is a development plan, so there's flexibility in this. So if you have an objection to the fence, you can remove that from the recommendation.
Okay. Mr. Bradley, do you see any possible resolution to the parking space issue of the eight less parking spaces? That you could make it work in there somehow or another?
Yeah, I mean, as, as far as what's going on now with the tenants, I think it's completely fine the way, you know, like Tags is in the morning and Barnesburg's always in the evening. Really, the only stick in the hole mud is the Jazzercise because they sometimes have a late-night class. But I don't think it's, sometimes it's a Friday night. But other than that, the, we never really have a problem with the parking, per se, unless people come from trios and park over and walk across the street. So that's our only, you know, where they call and say there's no parking.
Perhaps I didn't make myself clear enough. Do you see a way of including those eight parking spaces in your construction?
Oh, including them in there? I don't know if we even have the room.
The site's kind of maxed out.
Yeah.
I couldn't hear what he said.
I don't think we have any room to put any more spots in unless you were to remove some of the lands, the, yeah?
If you're going to address this, sir, you need to, first of all, both you maintain six-feet distance. And, sir, you need to give your name and address and spell your last.
I'm Jim Ritter. I'm an architect. And Osam and I worked together. Okay? And I was the architect for the entire project. And I was the architect for the addition, additional parking spaces, okay? And I, I think history and performance is everything. I think they've done a great job of running and maintaining the shopping center and controlling the shopping center with the mix of different uses, the restaurant and the retail and the coffee shop and the exercise and the storage areas. Okay? And many zoning codes allow a, a shopping center to have like a 20% reduction in the total requirements of parking spaces. And I don't see that the eight spaces, the way that they've been calculated right now, would be a problem. We could recalculate the spaces right now for current tenants, and I know we'll have an excess. And I think if we do a calculation with the Jazzercise people in Russ's office, I'm sure we will, we will be under that count. Now, if we were to have a third restaurant go in, that could be a problem. But then, then we had that discussion again, where many zoning codes allow a 20% reduction in a strip shopping center because they know there's going to be multiple uses on site.
Comment, Mr. Kaler?
I would clarify, you have the calculations in your staff report, but we do allow for a 15% reduction of floor area for storage. So my calculation basically took the total, backed out 15% of floor area. And then we allow parking to go either 10% above or below. So I took out an additional 10%. So that's where the name, the, the number came from.
Yep.
But, Mr. Bradley, the answer to my question of including the eight in your construction is no. Is that correct?
Let me help address that, too. There really is no more room on this site to add additional parking. When we did the second phase of the zoning for this, for the, for the added parking, we had to go down to Hamilton County Stormwater Department. And at that time, that there was a 50-year flood design setup required, okay? And on that project, on this project, we went to a 75-year flood requirement. So we made that basin larger than, than the county required at that time. And by doing that, we, in effect, lost five or six parking spaces. But they wanted the added volume, and we acquiesced, even though we did not have to provide it according to the zoning at that time. Today's standard is 100-year storm. When we did the project in 2004, 2005, it was a 50. And when, when the added parking went in, they asked us to do 75, and, and we, we did the 75-year storm. And then I, then I want to ask the question, has there been a stormwater problem in that area? And, and the answer is no. I, I'm sorry, I, I'm a 40-year Colrain Township resident, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Bradley.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, any comments, questions, et cetera, from anybody we've heard this evening? Okay, hearing none, then I would ask if anybody of the commission is prepared to make an, a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve case ZA 2005-09 at Springdale Road Commercial with the addition to condition three, adding on to the end, or that keeping existing vegetation, or sorry, I scratched out a couple of times, or keeping existing vegetation.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to approve this case, ZA 2005-09, et cetera, numbers, with the addition to item number three under conditions to have it state as it was stated by staff and with the exist, with the addition of and maintain existing vegetation be, or existing vegetation be preserved. Is that correct?
Yes.
Ms. McCall, is that correct? Okay. And Mr. Westfall, that meets with your approval on the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion of the motion by the commission? Does, in other words, does everybody understand what is before us at this moment? Any comments, questions? Hearing none, Mr. Kaler, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Ferring?
Yes.
Ms. McCallan?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Grody?
Yes. So the motion has passed, and congratulations, gentlemen, and good luck with your project. Okay, moving on, Mr. Kaler, do we have any public hearings?
No, we do not.
Any informal concept review?
We do not.
Old business?
None.
New business?
Is the Imagine Colrain Comprehensive Plan?
Okay, and does staff have a report?
Yes, we do. This is the culmination of several years of kind of on and off work to update our comprehensive plan. The last time we did this was back in 2004, 2005. So the plan was getting a little bit dated. And it's always healthy to keep revisiting the comprehensive plan. Ideally, the recommendation is to do it every five years. However, just the logistics of the undertaking of these plans, it's difficult to do every five years. But in any event, we have the new document. This commission sees the document most often. When we're looking at doing zoning map amendments, zoning text amendments, that we use it as a reference. When we're doing a development plan, we pull out the 2005 plan, look at that particular neighborhood and see what the land use recommendations are. And we use it as a guiding document to kind of shape what is envisioned for the future of Colrain Township. This particular plan is actually a little more comprehensive even than the last plan. This was developed by staff, and I will say that I was not necessarily involved with this. The heavy writing of this occurred really over the last year prior to my coming here. Jesse Urbansick, Taylor Grunwald, were the primary authors of this plan. And there was some oversight by former planning director Mike Iona with this. The decision was made early on to follow a pattern that was developed by the Ohio-Kentucky-Indiana Regional Council of Governments. They're kind of the Southwest Ohio-Kentucky-Indiana Oversight Group who makes recommendations on community planning, although on a regional scale. Their focus are on the areas of economic development, public facilities and services, housing, natural systems, energy, intergovernmental coordination, public health, mobility, community character, land use, and capital improvements. By contrast, our previous plan really only addressed the public services and facilities. We had some on housing, did not address natural systems to any comprehensive point. The last plan didn't address energy, did not address intergovernmental coordination, public health, did not, yeah, and, and did not have a capital improvement plan as part of it. So we're kind of filling in some gaps that we didn't have with the previous plan. This plan was developed, fortunately, a lot of it was done during COVID times. And so public participation took a variety of forms that may not be typical. We did have some classic town hall-type meetings where we had displays out in the lobby. We had presentations in the lobby. There were posters put up where people can do feedback. We also had virtual meetings, and this is a slide from, I think this was from the Facebook side. We had Facebook and Twitter and all sorts of social media to try to get feedback as to what people had for a vision for Colrain. They had the series of meetings. One was first during suburbs. Second was suburban living. Third was rural areas. Fourth was Colrain Avenue. uh, fourth was Colrain Avenue Commercial Corridor, and fifth was the Colrain Township as a whole. Uh, and... Uh, this is an example, I think this was at the Grossbeck Public Library. We put these posters out in public spaces. Let me see if I can zoom so you can see a little better. One says, "Colrain Township is great because..." And they already documented some of what we had heard by social media, and then invited people to just fill in the blanks. And so hopefully, people who came in the library would fill out blanks on this. Uh, the second one said, "Things I would change about Colrain Township." And then there's a list of what we heard so far on that as well. Oh, skipped. Uh, this is actually from the Facebook page. Um, it had the Imagine Colrain, and there was, uh, basically survey results were posted on that. This is from last September. Uh, and it just goes on and on, like as different parts of the plan were completed, there were postings about those particular things. And, um, we also had, uh, this is rather, I thought, innovative. On the Imagine Colrain website, uh, there was this interactive map where people could kind of put comment dots of things that they liked, things that they would like to see changed. Uh, you could mark it on a map and then type in comments as to what you'd like to see. And this was all public, so other people could go in and read this and, you know, make more comments if they wanted to do that. Uh, this is one of the public meetings. That's Mike Iona, who's our former planning director, doing a presentation about the plan uh, to a, a public group. White Cross Communications did a feature that is on their YouTube page. Uh, that is Taylor and Mike Iona being interviewed. Uh, also, at the same time, they interviewed Jesse Urbansik. And it was just kind of the call for comments on the plan. And then township overall, um, these were kind of the results of the public participation. Uh, number one was a concern about declining business and economy. Number two, poorly maintained low-income housing and other investor landlords. Third was litter and blight. Fourth, crime. I don't think these were in particular order by popularity either. These were just, uh, common themes that were heard. Uh, number five, changing demographics. Six was the rumpkey issues. And seven, declining schools. Uh, eight was poor infrastructure maintenance. Number nine, Northgate Mall was a concern. And also 10, lack of community feeling, that we're not a unified Colrain community. And then there's vision for the future. And, can I read this? Sorry. Uh, vision covered things like, uh, for improved commercial sites and businesses, improve the tax base and economy. Number two was improve residential property maintenance. Number three was increase security. Fourth, beautification. Five are more things for community gatherings in the park, uh, social interaction-type things. Number six was find a solution for Northgate Mall. Seven, walkable and bikeable community. Number eight is a connected community with government engaging with everyone in the township. Number nine, meta-theme, uh, all of this will change the perception of Colrain Township and attract new high-quality families to the township. So that's kind of the result of the public discourse, and these are things that were woven into the plan. And with each one of these types of things, there's a series of policy statements in the plan, and they are numerous. Like, this is a fairly lengthy plan. Uh, it has policy statements and strategies, and then some specific steps that are recommended towards achieving particular goals. So that's pretty much the meat of the plan. Uh, I know there was a presentation about a year ago. My impression was there wasn't a whole lot of discourse about, or discussion on the board about it at the, that time. But there has, there's been a lot of opportunities. This has been on the website, I think, since last February. Yeah? And, uh, comments have been very positive from the people I've talked to and read this. Uh, this also, uh, we submitted it to the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission, and they reviewed it. Uh, they actually took two months to review it. Uh, but they unanimously recommended for approval. Uh, things that they appreciated were that we did follow the OKI Regional Council of Governments format. Uh, I think this is the first of the townships within Hamilton County that's adopted this, uh, much more comprehensive approach. Uh, and they expressed a wish that other townships will follow this pattern and also do the same thing. Uh, they appreciated the organization, that they can basically find the strategies uh, that they're looking for very well within the topics. And, um, they agreed with it and also recommended approval. Um, if this commission agrees to, um, recommend approval of the plan, this would then be forwarded to our township trustees for final approval. And then we will, again, post this back to our website as the final approved comprehensive plan.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Koller. I think present with us this evening is Mr. Urbansik, uh, way back there in the back row, and with a little different facial composure. Didn't recognize him when he walked in. Mr. Urbansik, would you like to come forward and make some comments? And as you do come forward, on behalf of the commission, thank you for all the work that you put into this. It was outstanding. Just the input process that was able to be, uh, produced for the citizens to respond, it was excellent. So, the floor is yours, sir.
It's also weird to be on this side. So, Jesse Urbansik, previous Colrain Township employee, Marty did a really good presentation. I wanted to note that this happened, this process started even further back than 2020. This started back in 2015. I worked on this plan my entirety of my tenure at the township. And Taylor and I really put our heart and soul into this plan, but the residents of Colrain deserve this update. And I'm just here to see it get approved. So, if you have any questions, um, I'd be happy to ask or answer them, or Marty can answer them, but...
Can you give us some idea of the volume of responses that you received? I was noticing some numbers like 533 and 509 and...
Yeah, yeah, so that was the whole beginning of, uh, the digital age during COVID. So we started to do a lot of social media outreach with our Survey Monkey survey. Uh, we created a Facebook and Twitter account. Uh, we helped host the digital input surveys, as Marty highlighted on the screen previously. Um, before that, we had the energy component written through a grant through OKI, and we had an open house for that. And we also had a land use, uh, open house, uh, back in 2019 as well. So in 2020, that's when we started to go in more, uh, social media outreach and that. But, uh, we had hundreds of responses, uh, to the survey and social media, uh, people constantly, responding on comments and everything. So it was cool to see that and reach out to different groups of Colrain Township. So it was really, like, awesome part of my career. Uh, this was the start of my career. I was happy that I contributed to such a great plan and for such a great team, so. And I think Taylor and I, and the residents with all input, uh, created a great document to hopefully guide Colrain Township in the next decade or two, hopefully, so.
Okay. Before you leave the, the podium there, commissioners, any comments or questions from Mr. Urbansik?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. I enjoyed the way it was formatted, and I'm very visual, so the coloring was just fantastic for me.
That was all Taylor, so I will make sure to relay the message.
Okay. Thank you very, very much. Okay? Okay, commissioners, discussion about the comprehensive plan? Additional questions, comments from anybody from Mr. Koller, Mr. Urbansik?
So mine is just so super minor that I don't even know if I want to bring it up. But basically, on page 13, there is a reference under the public facilities and services, and it mentions the strategies and initiatives, and it speaks of 5G technology. Do we want to call it out as 5G technology, or just say something such as the newest technology? Because if we are, as you said, looking at it every five years, maybe 10 years, we've gone way over that, uh, we may not want to just specify because it may be 6G, 7G by the time the zoning commission in 20 years looks at it again. Uh, so that was just, like I said, just a minor comment on that.
Mm-hmm.
And then I had emailed you previously, just with all the capital Ts that were throughout the, the comp plan. And that was just me being a grammar.
Yeah. I mean, 5G technology, I think we would be very happy if we achieved that in itself uh, in whatever's next. You know, that could be incorporated in the next plan, but, um, I don't think there's an intent to not see future generations of that going in. Um, I mean, with regards to the, um, capital T, and this is just in general, when we refer to Colrain Township, we capitalize the C and the T, Colrain Township. When we refer to the Township meaning Colrain, we still capitalize the T. We're just basically abbreviating. Instead of saying Colrain Township, we're referring to the Township being us. If we're referring to Township, like Township Government in general, that would be lowercase t. But that's the reason, the rationale for that.
Makes sense. And if the language regarding the 5G was maintained as is presented, it wouldn't stop anybody from going beyond that if it passes, if it goes beyond that?
Yeah, that's the best there is now, so, bit of...
Yeah, a point well taken, then. You know, five to 10 years, that may be old stuff.
Right.
But... I think in the here and now, 5G would be a worthy, worthy goal.
Right, like I mentioned, I was like, mention it, not mention it, eh, I'll just throw it out there.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I have a question on the land use part. And I've had people ask me a few things about these issues. And I guess their biggest concern is when we say we're going to have this land use program that we're throwing out there, and we're saying that we want, uh, Northgate area to be this and Western, uh, area to be rural and all that bit. As, as far as zoning goes, if a person has something that's zoned, you know, uh, B2 or residential, and that falls under this new map in a different area, their concern is, hey, I have a 100-acre farm, and now they want it to be green space. Am I going to be able to cut this up into building lots down the road? Um, I have a, well, I know in one area here, it speaks of Colrain Avenue, Gateman Road and 27. Gateman Road doesn't cross 27.
Hmm, okay.
27 is a two-lane highway by the firehouse, east of the firehouse. But I know, I think the area they're talking about is by Kemper and Old Colrain.
Near the fire station.
Near the fire station.
Correct, yeah.
Um, I actually developed a few of those lots years ago into residential that were marked, earmarked for retail-y under an old plan. Now, somebody that has something that's, that's retail or residential, and we come through five years later and say, well, we really like this to be retail and it's residential, or vice versa, how do they stand with the zoning that they have? Is this something that can be forced upon them? I'm just, the questions I'm being asked, can we be forced into changing our zoning?
Not necessarily. The comprehensive plan is intended to be guidance to say, okay, we have a policy. And like for that specific, um, recommendation, there is that area that has a fire station and a little bit of commercial activity going on in an otherwise large expanse of rural residential. And, you know, even though it's rural, there's probably a demand for some convenience retail that you don't have to drive a long, long way. And so that little node where all those roads come together is probably a logical point that if somebody did want to rezone and put a, say, a convenience store in, in that area, we'd probably say, yeah, the, the plan would recommend that. Um, and I'll also say as a caveat, almost all the time, rezonings are, um, generated by the property owner, not by the township. It, it, it would be incredibly rare, I can't even think of any circumstances, where the township has taken the initiative to rezone properties. Now, having said that, I've got a whole list of properties that I think are currently improperly zoned for what is there, and the township is going to take, um, the initiative to rezone those in cooperation with the owners. If the owners somehow would object, and I doubt if they would object in these because there's clearly an error in the zoning map that needs correcting, that, that would be something that we would work with property owners on. But, like I say, uh, it would be rare that we would take the initiative and the property owners are the ones who really are doing something, and it might be in their interest. But, you know, it might be detrimental. You know, if somebody went out into a terribly rural area and wanted to do high-density residential, we would probably say, no, this, this plan, and, and, you know, the infrastructure's not there, the roads aren't there, the, you have no water and sewer. We would probably not go for that. So this document is intended to be that guidance to say, we don't envision at any point in the future that we have high-density residential in, in area that we say should be rural.
I think, I guess, what they're more concerned with, like, say, at 27, well, at Colrain and Kemper Road, I know years ago, tho, those lots through there, 200 feet back, were retail-y. I actually built some houses on them, they're retail, or they're residential now. But say a person next to those houses had a piece of retail, or a piece of residential, but it's under our new map as an area that could use a convenience store. Do the neighbors still have the, I don't want to say the right, uh, you, you know, now you, you go for, for rezoning something that has to go up in front of the board, you're sending the neighbors out, you know, their notifications. Would, would the township weigh in more on changing that, you know, without consent of the neighbors and...
Uh, yeah. I, the process will be, you know, if somebody wanted to initiate that type of an amendment, uh, that application would go to this board first. We'd have a public hearing, we'd notify all the surrounding property owners. Also, whenever there's a commercial use that's inserted into a residential area, our zoning code requires buffering, screening, all that type of thing. And the more extreme the difference is, like, if you have industrial to res, to rural residential, you have to have very wide buffer strips. And, you know, as the intensities become a little more similar, that, that buffer strip, uh, is reduced. But the purpose of having these public hearings is to hear from the neighbors and find out their concerns. And then it's up to a public board to make a reasonable decision as to whether that's a good thing for the township or a bad thing. And we would look to the code as guidance, but we are not mandated to go by it. It, it, it's usually good to say, hey, you know, we've given some forethought to this, and we think it's reasonable, but it does not necessarily tie your hands.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Just a general comment. I did like the fact that the comprehensive plan has language in it that includes working with the Northwest Local School District on certain developments and tips and so forth. So I appreciated seeing that in there. For the summary for each of the sections, it has the strategies and initiatives, and I know the answer, but I just want to make sure that we state it. That would be for each department head at that point, such as if you're going to align a plan, then the, this guidebook would go to, say, Jackie O'Connell, and it's like, okay, check off, here's all the tasks that were assigned in the comp plan, and now go forth and do these. So just wanted to say that I liked having that forward plan. You know, we just don't approve it today, and it just sits on a shelf. So I did appreciate that. But the Northwest Local School District is actually something that I was looking forward to seeing here, hoping that I would see it, and when I did, I was pretty grateful for that.
Okay. Any other input? Okay, hearing none. Then I, the chair, would entertain a motion regarding this matter of Imagine Colrain.
I'll make a motion to approve the Imagine Colrain Comp Plan as presented.
Okay. Been moved to approve it as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there further discussion about the motion on the floor? Everybody understand what is being moved and seconded? Hearing none. Mr. Kohler, could we please have a roll call?
Mr. Westfall?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. McMullin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferring?
Yes.
Mr. Grody?
Yes. So the motion passes 5-0, and again, congratulations, Mr. Urbansik and Mr. Kohler, for a job well done. So very, very well done. Okay, moving on. Mr. Kohler, any administration?
No.
Any announcements?
No.
Okay. Commissioners, any comments that anybody would like to make this evening? On behalf of the commission, I'd like to sincerely express a word of thank you to Mr. Kohler for coming in and pinch hitting over these past months. We're going to miss seeing you here, but you're always welcome.
Thank you.
And if you have nothing to do on this specific Tuesday evening, you're welcome to come to the meetings.
Thank you.
It's more easy, more comfortable watching them at home, though, aren't they? But thank you ever so much, and again, enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
And Mr. Haley, welcome to you. We look forward to working with you starting next month, I would assume.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the next meeting is September 22nd, and Mr. Kohler, do we have any business on hand at this time?
Yes. You two have two zoning amendment applications for review at the September meeting.
Okay. Could we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So move. I'll second that.
Okay. And can we have a voice vote on this, this motion? All in favor of adjourning the meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? The meeting is ended.